This is the Town of Biden Solid Waste Committee regular meeting Monday, April third, two thousand and three, at two thousand and twenty-three, at four o'clock P M. Old Town Hall, eleven eleven Somerset Avenue. This meeting is being recorded. The listing of matters like those recently anticipated by the chair may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items may in fact be discussed, other than I, other items not listed ultimately to be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the order. So we have the agenda, and first thing is to call to order. It's not coming.
Oh, who I am? Yes. Roll call, I mean, Tom Perry, state note of honor.
Hot calling, help agent.
Uh, Mike, all the time, Mr. President.
Peter, select me.
The whole mountain, supporting him.
Robert Perry, remember?
If we, that Friday was, we consider. I'll go start with old business, and the first thing is bulky waste day, pricing items to be accepted, et cetera.
Well, like at the last meeting, thanks to, uh, thanks to Mr. Perry's work. We, uh, um, we were able to look at what trends have been, uh, for bulky waste week the last three years. Um, and we spent a lot of time actually, um, discussing mattresses, uh, whether to accept mattresses, um, um, during bulky waste week, how we would accept them, uh, whether they would be, um, uh, put it under any type of class bags, et cetera. Um, and, uh, with bulky waste week just over a month away now, we, um, need to revisit that. And, uh, come up with a game plan of how to, um, address the mattresses and any other issues, including, uh, the conflict with regards as well.
Mike, did you say that's only a month away?
Usually in May. Uh, we got it on to Board Health agenda for next week.
I would back.
So we can set the date, Tom Perry is getting us the dates for his employees, so we can figure it out.
Okay.
So we can think, are we taking mattresses or are we taking?
That, that's part of the discussion tonight.
Yep.
So we're gonna bounce around with this whole little business thing. So, um, why don't we, as a committee, come up with a tentative week to help the Board of Health, you know, make a recommendation? Cause they might have reasons not to, uh, you might have reason not to. So I, I just looking at my calendar and what happens throughout town. So it should be, if we're willing, either five fifteen, the week of five fifteen, or the week of six five. Between those are probably not a good time.
Or you can't do it Memorial Day week.
Right. So it's five fifteen, you, everyone here might think that's too soon, I don't know.
It's a little early, then we usually do it, but.
Right, other than that, now you're looking into six five or later.
I don't know, I like this, the, uh, five fifteen, uh, only because, um, the weather will be nicer, and I think people will have time to clear out their, when, when will the fire go off?
Well, I, I don't, we need to discuss one.
Right, so maybe, maybe the six five, it would be better.
We've got this one here, which is something more than I discussed, you know, ready for next meeting, uh, but I don't have a draft, because I, I don't have the particulars for that bulky ways.
Right, so if it happened by fifteen, I think it's possible. We could use the message board to see Board Health's website for details. It's still possible, but I think it's easier to navigate towards the five fifteen, I mean, uh, the six five, yeah.
Other than being town meeting is nothing special that we. And not, yeah, town, the annual town meeting.
Yeah, the only other thing that weighs into this is Liz and I have, that the week of bulky and the week before, we have to be here. No vacations, no protests, no nothing, like, we have to be here.
Okay.
So we gotta check our schedules to see what's on for our schedules too, but I thought I had sent you some dates, but I don't, I don't have the time at the moment, but. Is that, it's an insane amount of foot traffic and phone calls. Especially if we have more education to do this year.
Uh, what type of, um, messaging or like flyers do we typically get out, they don't?
It's, and it's always, it's always, once you start picking up, even though you picked up Monday, you pick up Tuesday and Wednesday, they'll call for the Monday schedule, they didn't know. Yeah, so the Board of Health's always try to resolve them problems, you know? So we end up always going back over the roots.
So normally, yeah, so normally we posted on the town website, Board Health website, and the, um, message boards.
Is Memorial Day the twenty ninth?
I believe that's what it's celebrated.
So you will be off a couple of days that week, right?
But we can't do it that week.
Uh, no, I know we can't, but you have to be here for a week before.
It's not behalf of. Phone calls that come in are ridiculous, so the more you can spread it out, the better off it is. So if he wants to vote in the week of Memorial Day weekend, then that comes from Tuesday, it's just, it's open. So yeah, we can do it in short week, although like you says, there's always people you gotta catch up afterwards.
Right. On the, uh, biggest decisions for the true view? When you think it would work?
Yeah, I would go towards this, this six five or later. You hear you, it was, you want to announce it, make sure there's no conflict.
Well, yeah, this board doesn't need to make a suggestion, the Board of Health will set up a order next Thursday. I, I mean, if everybody's in agreement for those two dates, or whatever, six five would be preferred, obviously, we'll be voting it next week.
Um, I would ask, um, when, put together the flyer, if two of you in town and could put together, uh, the points, and I'll weave those together with what we discussed this evening. And, uh, I could even email out a draft uh, flyer and then, uh, or notification, then we could, uh, dust it and perhaps vote on it next meeting, you know, but then you got my email address, so just send me the key point you want to make, and as I said, I'll weave it together, discuss.
Yeah, ultimately, the biggest point is if it's in a trash bag, put it in the trash bag.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm serious.
No, I, I, yeah.
The stuff that people put out there is like, it's insane.
Do we get a lot of mattresses at that time?
About twenty-five percent of our mattresses.
We've averaged out over the past three years at fifty-two. On bulky ways.
On bulky ways.
We.
Yeah, we.
So I, I would say, as far as pricing, uh, the biggest conversation tonight would be the mattress, are we gonna pick it up? Are we gonna charge, um, rejected price, or are we gonna figure out how to do inspection?
Which I don't think we can, I, I, I think what you said last time, or not putting words in your mouth, was that, uh, everything should be considered rejected because it's going to sell, the elements.
Or probably has been.
Or has been.
Yes.
Well, I had, um, last meeting, I had put the data together, I'd made a suggestion about covering the mattresses, et cetera, and, uh, thought about that some more, and the fact that we get an average of fifty-two and small, we, we, do we wanna put your employees in the position of saying, yes, that's good, no, that isn't, I don't, I, I'm just wondering if maybe we should just not reject, just not pick them up.
Not pick them up at all?
At all.
Okay.
And I, I like the idea of not picking them up, however, your first point, my employees, most of them are already trained on how to accept a mattress, because we're running the transfer station already.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, well, let me put it different way. First of all, I agree with, uh, however, uh, do we wanna have to have your employees out in the field, you realize, if picking things up, tell people, no, this is rejected, uh, as opposed to down at the transfer station where, uh, yes, it is, no, it isn't. And, um, I don't know, I, I think it's cleaner to do it at the transfer station, personally, but I don't have that experience.
It's hard to do payment, like now, when you're there, like, it's rejected, we can take it, but we were already paid, but, so I don't understand how we get through that process.
Yeah.
It's be challenging.
So, right.
Unless you give them a bill afterwards, which is gonna be.
Good luck.
You lose your leverage. So I always kinda disagreed with this pickup, curbside pickup anyways, because even though they can't get it there, there is a way to get it to the transfer station. They can ask a neighbor, hire a pickup truck, rent a pickup truck.
Rent a van for nineteen ninety-nine new home.
There's always, there's always a way.
Oh, no, I, absolutely.
It, it was the concept of the idea was to provide a service, because they're paying for our department and the whole town's resources, so to provide a service, but, uh, I think, uh, goal of this committee is to try to be more opportunier, or, you know, business oriented, make sure it's in the black and not green and red.
Right, well, I'll agree with Tom, in fact, we're providing a service for those who can't do it themselves. But when people realize, I either get a fifteen dollar sticker to drop it off there, plus the fee, or you'll come pick it up at my house for the fee, like, I'm saving fifteen dollars for you to come get it.
Right.
So I think that's part of it, that's why we have so much being picked up that week, because, because people just see the free service.
I, I wouldn't err on the side of not taking them. Mainly because you can't have your employees out there saying, this is acceptable, this is not acceptable, and get in confrontation with the resident saying, you're gonna charge me a hundred and twenty-five for, and like, what you said, is how do we go about refunding the people who have paid? You can't leave it to them, um, pay a hundred and twenty-five at Town Hall and, and have the mattress, or not pay the hundred and twenty-five and have the mattress be rejected. Or, or even reverse, and then have this situation where we owe them money. So what's the worst case scenario? We take everything but mattresses?
Well, we don't take propane tanks either.
Right, there's, there's a ban list, you just add into ban list.
You don't take the demolition debris, that kind of stuff, those are already listed.
Well, I mean, I guess, in addition to what those common ones would be.
But they can bring it to the transfer station.
Right, there is an alternative.
Yeah, and already, I mean, I do think we're like far ahead of what other, how, how other communities have adopted to adapt with the mattress being as well. The fact that we do have a transfer station option is way better than, oh, you know, a ton of, where other, uh, where other cities and towns are with the van? And, yeah, like, I mean, but just to get the mattresses, what, oh, yeah, they have, and, oh, just everything we have to deal with as a town. Oh, yeah, like, I just, um, think it's, you know, oh, yeah, I get to just have that out of bulky waste week at this point.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so along with the January, we're supposed to figure out the pricing for the bulky waste pickup.
Can I add one more thing in the flyer for bulky waste week? Um, do we, do we agree the recommendation is not to pick up the mattresses?
I, I, I think so.
Okay, um, do we couch that by saying, um, something like, uh, because of the, uh, from an educational perspective, because of the requirements by the Department of, uh, Farm Protection, et cetera, uh, we, it is uh, more effective for us not to pick them up during bulky, bulky waste than to bring them, have you bring them to the transfer station, uh, and where the decisions be made and, and collections of payments be made at that time. Say it in that way, so we're not just saying, I wanna pick.
I would, I would say it's safe for your workers to.
Yes, I mean, or, or other means, which means transfer station or where you bought.
Yeah.
Your replacement.
Yeah, but I mean, there's, okay, so that, yeah, we'll weave that in there, but I just want, you know, say, not doing.
Good luck on working that.
Friends.
So, Mr. Chairman, would, would you wanna entertain the mattress by itself, and then we'll tackle everything else on the list?
Sure.
Second.
Over.
Hi.
Okay, uh, I believe everything else on the list can be priced accordingly, um, however, do we want their first item charging a fifteen dollar stop fee, equivalent to what a transfer station would give us?
Right.
So whether they have five things or one thing?
It's still fifteen dollars.
The first, you're right, the first fifteen dollars, and then you add per item.
Yep.
The flip side of that is gonna be that, I'm gonna say, I'm not giving fifteen dollars, you're doing, so let's just put everything out at your house, which makes the less stops to the DPW, but.
Doesn't create less waste, though.
Doesn't create less waste, but I can see neighbors consolidating, go along, just, they pay.
Right.
But I'll come in and buy your slips and whatever, bring you home stickers, what they do.
Sure.
I felt too, would wanna enjoy the risk, you guys had like the stickers, the address, so we expect to see something in front of the address.
Right.
Is that an issue, though? I mean, if, if neighbors, say, I had my neighbors on either side who appears in my yard, uh, for fifteen dollars for three houses, I mean, you're gonna stop. I'm not advocating this, by the way, but you're gonna stop. Even, everything is done right there, you don't have to jump, even though it's a small, a short distance, and, you know, I guess from a fuel perspective, you could probably shut off vehicle that you're not using, it, I, I mean, is that a really big deal if, if people, neighbors consolidate into?
I, I, I don't know, I, I think we'll just monitor it, look.
Yeah, we didn't have that many chatters next door to each other, without just happening, I'm, it's no different than if Tom's going to the transfer station, hey, can you bring this up there?
Right.
What are we losing? So, yeah, I don't think we're losing, I'm just saying that I can see bigger piles in front of somebody's house, but.
So if we have a, so we would have a flat, like, if we plus the cost of the individual items that have been thrown away, so even if we had a neighborhood power out hypothetically, I can advance, there would still need to be an inventory of what was being picked up to get a like, an applicable fee, and I just don't, I mean, that's a lot of coordination between neighbors.
It, great, and it, and it may already be happening with the transfer station.
Right, now, plus they have to come to Town Hall already knowing that our neighbors are gonna gather to save fifteen dollars.
And what those items are, right, that's a lot of work.
But having neighbors talk to each other is not necessarily that thing.
And by the way, it from twenty twenty-three, we were in twenty twenty-two, averaged a hundred and twenty stops.
Now, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with fifteen dollars, but, because it's the same at the transfer station, yeah. But is that per day or per hours? And I say that to a lot of people on Tuesday, and then on Wednesday, they call us and say, oh, I got something else, and you come on Friday, you get it. This is fifteen dollars for a second day.
Yeah.
I'd say so.
I don't think we'd be going back anyways.
For a day.
We wouldn't be going back unless they could prove or
Right.
that we missed them.
Yeah, and that's, they came up with something else, yeah.
Hey, and, yeah, just from like a route manager, a route management point of view, I mean, I mean, yeah, that second trip is costing us more than anything, so, I mean, we should, you know, I mean, I could sound like, I sound like my dad, but, yeah, so what's, so what's saying lack of putting on my part does not constitute a emergency.
Right. I would say we charge them the fifteen dollars per address, and if we would charge a second trip, they pay the second fifteen.
Yeah, in the flyer, I just read something like it's gonna be fifteen dollars per stop, so as part of the education, plan ahead, get it out there all at once.
Right.
And then, um, that way, you know, just, again, this is what we're gonna do, now it's, the onus is upon you to get it all out there.
Yeah, if you miss the day, you miss the day.
That's why June date is even more helpful for that planning.
Yeah.
Would you want that in form of a motion?
So I'd like to make a formal motion to be fifteen dollars, entertain a curbside pickup for bulky items, then per item as the transfer station rate list.
That's per hours. Fifteen dollars per item. I'll second this.
All day.
Bye.
So, Mr. Chairman, I do need to be somewhere else for three, uh, four thirty, uh, I can go through the rest of, uh.
The oldest issue, every week, uh, what, what's an update from you was the cameras. I know we're not putting cameras on the inside, but you had cameras come in for.
Yeah, they've been used for two months already.
Have that, I know we disposed of them on the second list.
Yeah, stills it, you know.
Right, yeah, so the new ones are there?
Yeah.
And what, where are they?
So, is a tractor trailer right near that?
Oh, yeah, right in the back of that, oh, okay, I mean, I don't know.
Um, so, and that's why I moved the other shipping container close, keep everyone tight. He gets it, I can control the setting when it, right now it's twenty-four seven.
Yep.
So I get Ricky the raccoon two o'clock in the morning, or, or just coming by at four thirty in the evening.
Okay.
Yeah, everything else in between.
Right.
But I can, I can set that, and it goes right, right.
Yeah.
Um, I got one camera there now, yeah, I bought two cameras, the other one I use it to how we go at it this time, I'll probably move it up there also, so we have a different angle, most likely at a tin pile.
Okay.
Yeah, because we still have a, a, another problem up there, a minor problem.
Uh, that was it for, that I wanted to get done before you left, but, uh, if you wanna go on to the point of sale update?
Yeah, point of sale, we're in the process of new devices coming, um, and then from there, we can, I'll solidify it with Mr. Mo on the program, we'll probably use what the town clerk's already using.
Right.
Uh, a program, they're willing to set up the program, recharge it for using them, and it's a pass through fee, it goes right to the credit card.
Yep.
They don't, if we hit so many, like I recorded last meeting, if we get enough hits, we don't get a monthly fee, I think the monthly fee is twelve thousand something, but we're not gonna, I think we're gonna supersede that.
Sure, that's a collective number of hits, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But the challenge is switching from check only to card only.
Yep.
And if the unit's down, for whatever reason.
We're in trouble.
So, yeah, we can use the paper slips again, but.
Yeah.
Who's carrying checks?
Sure.
So do we close and not? I mean, I, I don't know what other towns are doing. What happens if it's down? So, with the devices we're getting, it should be standalone data. Um, if we need to add the internet, we will afterwards, I'm trying to avoid that extra monthly fee.
Sure.
But that'd be one way to solve it, but we wouldn't be able to solve it if you had a problem on a Saturday.
Right.
So.
And, and there are other towns we can reach out and ask what they've done.
So I know Hingham's one of them, I did ask our vendor multiple times, and maybe because they don't have permission to share that information, they haven't, she never answers that email, she's very responsive, but that's the only email she does not answer. I know Hingham's one of them, because she used that for an example in an interview. The point of sale is still in process.
Okay.
Uh, we get those little small snafus to figure out, staffing, um, it's not posted yet.
We, um, we're gonna post, I had a discussion with the union, um, this afternoon, uh, this afternoon, actually, uh, we just need the, um, um, the selectmen's approval on the updated, on the new job description, put up, because it is, um, which, based on the discussion with the union today, uh, we should be able to add that to the agenda for Wednesday night.
You know, radically different than what I shared.
And now, can you resend that to me, because I was trying to find that real quick before I came over here.
Right, yes, and you and I should have a discussion, I think it's, may wanna reach out on a contract also.
Yes. Yeah, um, so, uh, but, um, uh, we are moving forward that rework, uh, I would believe, I'm trying to entertain, to see if there was any flexibility um, to, um, how that works with our current staffing, uh, but actually, federal labor, um, laws and statute prevent today. So like, this way, it's, uh, it's clean and well dedicated, level of dedicated employee, uh, at the transfer station, uh, one of the things we, uh, like, have been actually, uh, considering is to, uh, I have the appeal filing, uh, in the fourteen hour, uh, position, and right now, with the transfer station open up Wednesdays, uh, I'm heading for Wednesdays, if we move the, the transfer station, the weekday transfer station, um, this operation, oh, yeah, from the Wednesday to Friday, we still be able to keep a weekday operation, but make it a little bit more appealing to someone at the bell, yeah, exactly, so like, when they work at the transfer station, it's just not so random time, right in the smackdown middle of the work, we did.
Right.
So, yeah, so there's some structure to it.
True.
The evening is usually pretty popular.
Evening, okay.
Um, so, yes, so, yeah, well, I have that plan solidified, and I'm, I'm ready to go, because, um, paying overtime, staffing, yeah, just as I.
Can we go back to bulky waste for a second? Um, maybe later on during the month, might be better, because you're gonna have on the signs, comes the annual town election, I mean, town meeting, and then you're talking about bulky pickup, the following week, you're only giving a week on that, on those signs.
Good point.
Then if we can push it, then we can have.
I could be creative and put it all in one message book.
We bring in the facts, though.
Yeah. Just have a doctor.
Yeah.
If they could bring that, then they could bring it to the transfer station.
Yeah.
Okay. We go, could you mail me the absolute key points, you know, from your perspective for that bulky waste week, and as I said, I'll, I'll put everything together in a flyer, we just email it to.
That'd be great.
Okay. And if, if I may, it may be out of order, uh, Mr. Neely is a nice choice.
Oh, yes.
Um, reminder phone calls are useful, he does respond well with emails, and he's very knowledgeable of how committees and boards run.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, reminder phone call before, I mean, might be useful.
Sure.
Thanks.
Nice.
Pleasure having you.
Uh, see, it's always available to date.
Yeah, well, I think, we've been talking about, sat around, and they said, um, Todd, the same thing, you know, your, your key issues, I've got a number of notes here, and what I will do is as soon as I get the information corrected, put together a draft, I'll email it out, do I hear me?
Um, I'm not sure, anyway, no.
Yeah, if you would.
Yeah.
Um, okay, yeah.
Whatever, pretty bold science, and having them mail it, correct?
Well, no, what, what I will do is I'll put together a draft, I will email it to you, and then, um, perhaps we could, if we see changes that you would like to make, make the change, send it back to me.
Right.
And I'll keep updating, updating, and then hopefully by the time next meeting rolls around, we'll have a draft we can all agree with, and then figure out the formatting, you know, from that point, if that's acceptable.
Sure. Um, well, like I said, I'm gonna print both sides of the flyer.
Oh, yeah.
And then have the printing company mail them for us, like we've done in the past.
Yeah, if, if that's the most cost-effective way.
Right, um, when I had one for my election, I, I think it was like thirteen hundred, between eleven and thirteen hundred, uh, I can get the exact figure, but, um.
And last one we did was fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred?
Yeah.
It's a lot of that.
Thank you.
That, that was like a far, it wasn't paid.
Right, that was, it was not.
Yeah, it shouldn't be on.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, it was possibly, well, I mean, the refrigerator was probably somewhere on that, yes, you must have it.
It's on the refrigerator. It wasn't very aesthetically pleasing.
Uh, they meshed that.
Yeah. We'll have to work on that.
Thanks, well, moving on to business, uh, A, review, discuss, act, volunteer application for David Neely, a solid waste committee meeting.
Yeah, and the other table that was a member, um, I apologize, but, um, uh, but Mr. Neely, uh, he was actually supposed, um, to be attending this afternoon, uh, but it's my understanding, back in the early two thousands, he was on the original solid waste, uh, he was on the original solid waste salad committee, and, um, he's actually, um, he's, he's a very nice gentleman, um, I think he lives out on President Street, and, um, he, uh, since we, since, um, the committee, uh, was created last summer, he's actually explained into my office on at least two or three occasions now, uh, just offering his input, um, he did actually say, when the committee was first reestablished, that he wished he knew about it, uh, because he would have, he has an interest someone to join, um, and, yeah, and then on a few occasions since, uh, he, um, he has swung by, oh, yeah, uh, he's been following our meetings, so he's been sharing so his input on what, so we've seen up to, and, um, and, yeah, and with my, I mean, I talked, um, I talked, I spoke with Commissioner Agnew as well, who's worked with, um, who's worked with Mr. Neely, um, he's also on the land use committee as well, and he's a, and he's a value added, uh, I believe he's a value added, so, I mean, we could, uh, how we could entertain adding him now, we could have a, uh, upcoming meeting, but we just wanted to uh, make forward to the group's recommendation.
One of the things, I think it was Jim Agnew said, that we even need another person, but having another person gives us the odd number, um, and I don't know this gentleman, but if you guys do.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think we should have another person, just jumping by tonight's turn.
I, I don't know a person based on, right, or in the age of this law. So, very, I would say, yes.
I would say anybody that wants to be part of the solid waste committee, I, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Okay, so we truly make a motion, or we wanna bring him in?
So we're, we'd be recommending it to the Board of Health, right?
Right.
Well, so what was that?
Yes.
Yeah, this is something we need to board health, so this recommendation goes.
We need to restructure or anything, like add another at large member, because you know, we're only sent to the. We need to restructure or anything like add another at large member, because you know, we're only sent to the, so.
We did tricks, uh so so this position replaces a clinic. The clinic has been intended with name. Uh but we don't have a chance. Of station tenant, so as long. As the recommendation would be to appoint him, I mean, like. It might be that he would just by essence of. Him as an ally. By resident, he would be appointed.
No, I think we lost the number, so I thought we were adding to the numbers via the I, but we're.
Yes. So does that? Legal perspective, there's have to be two motions. Well, one, we. Uh change the position title.
Uh yes.
To attendant to, from attendant to. Member at minimum or at large.
Yep.
And then the second motion. Assuming that would be approved by the board health. Then to recommend Mr. Neely be nominated or voted.
I would second both of those.
That way it keeps it all clean.
Yeah.
They can make those motions. I will do that. Uh I'm gonna make two motions. First motion. Uh to the board of health that uh. The position of uh membership. And a position of town. Uh transfer station attendant as a member be changed to member at large. And and we want to second that.
Second.
Then all the favorites. Second motion. Following uh. First motion, second motion would be to uh. Accept. Nominate Mr. David Neely as. Member of all of this committee. Second. All of them, bye. Sounds great. Which gentleman will be an exit. And we have approval of the minutes.
We don't have any minutes yet at this point.
Okay. Uh then schedule the next meeting. Um I don't necessarily have to do Mondays anymore, so if somebody finds this to be a burden, that's fine, um or we can keep them on Mondays.
I like the Mondays.
Okay.
But that's just me.
Well, yeah, Monday is fine with me. I will, I will be out of control. May first.
I I will say that Wednesdays work better for the town staff because we're here at five thirty.
Okay.
But that's just an observation, it wasn't a.
Definitely on the offbeat from this like.
Right, so it'd be May third. The seventeenth. Or the thirty first. Uh thirty first puts us to post to um.
So we're not going to do Monday, we're going to flip to Wednesday. Well, that was a good suggestion, because Jim and me and Tom are all here at five thirty, right? But here then we're not. You know, obviously.
Right, so.
But we have to, so either way, it doesn't matter.
Well, you want to keep Mondays? Are you okay?
Yeah, I'm just saying that um it doesn't matter to me just on May first.
They're not here. Okay. Want to shoot for May third? It's Wednesday. What time was the, what time was the meeting?
I don't have a problem with Wednesdays. The only, oh, yeah, the only thing, just go back to the mailer. I'm just wondering a lot, if we all agree that a mailer. Oh, is a priority. If we have the ability to work over email. And uh finalizing it, uh like I'm just uh thinking about the information that we need to get out.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't actually necessarily think. We. Uh oh, yeah, we need a meeting to say that we work out language. But just if we could do that over email, so we might have the ability to have that mail out sooner than later. Um. So I would. Uh just, I mean, if we, if we meet next on the third, that's like a month away, it's a month of. I'll find you a bit of ours, so you can get that information.
As long as everybody who responds on the email responds to everyone.
Yeah.
That way everybody can see the comments and not being repetitive or. And um. As I said, Tom. Sooner you get it to me, the sooner I can create a draft, but. Okay.
You have the one we did last time? I'm sorry, do you have the one we did last time?
Uh I probably have that home.
Okay, no, I don't know if you started with that.
No, I I did, I was this one. It was the uh town analysis, important change to mattress textiles, which we we had a discussion. On this morning, which I'm going to uh. I'll send out to to everybody once they make some changes or uh, you know, review and um by the way uh. Just so you all know, I have no pride of authorship. If 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 I write it down, you don't like it in total or half of it, I. Whatever gives us the best.
Mm hmm.
No, I'll I'll run the flag with the flag.
Um. So just like in terms of process, would we be um. Uh just really going back to the mail, like if. The committee can just vote. On actually, like sending out a um mail to notify. The residents of the appropriate changes and then still hit, so as a responding wordsmithing. So something we cannot, so we're not violating your meeting law because we would already, so we've already been delivered. We've already delivered with the mailer.
Yeah.
And. Uh the mailer and a mailer that has been approved, certainly all we would be doing at that point is wordsmithing, so we don't.
Yeah, I I I think that'd be the correct terminology for it, and it's just what it works.
Yeah.
Okay.
And but this board doesn't have any control of funding, so we gotta recommend it to the board of health, the board of health can recommend to spend the money on the mail.
David helped me find a proposal.
So we can add to our next week's agenda.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, that's actually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think we used it, Brian.
Fine. I mean, that, so I'll make that in.
Everybody want to second that?
Second.
All of them.
I.
I suppose, so me.
Sorry about that.
That's all right, it's a good point.
Um. Oh, yeah, so did we want to look at method?
Uh make it a turn with me.
Again, what time would you make?
Um whatever works for you guys.